It's 5:18. I'll call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Belvin, would you read our community prayer?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. If I could ask you all just to offer a moment of silence for Jack Angley, a former Carver selectman and longtime Carver resident who passed recently. Thank you. Let's see. First item on our agenda, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have several minutes. Minutes of 8:17, 2021, the minutes of 9:10, 2021, the minutes of 9:14, 2021, and the minutes of 9:21, 21. Is there a motion?
I have a few edits.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we just do all the edits first and just do one main motion for all of them? Do you want to do that instead of individual motions for each one?
If that's what the board would prefer, it's fine with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Elaine, I apologize for not having gotten this too sooner. So, on the September 10th, minutes, page four, at the very bottom, the, right after the last sentence that LaFawn stated it would make sense business-wise, I also said that if we extend the contract, we could be paying three town administrators, the current interim, the new TA, and the former TA.
Is that the only edit?
And on page six, third line up from the bottom, Walsh stated that it may have suppressed the turnout, but was pleased to receive that should be 12 applications. On the September 14th meeting, on page six, where Mr. Hoffman asked, "What two things have you accomplished?" Down towards the end of that paragraph, LaFawn started this group, which included about six districts and saved a lot of money. If I'm not mistaken, he said it saved a lot of money for the towns in the group. Just got left out here.
What page was that?
Page six.
Page six. Mr. Hoffman's question, the third sentence up from the bottom, saved a lot of money. I believe he indicated that that was for the towns in the health group. Page seven at the top, it said, "Mr. LaFawn stated at the time the last recession, a transformer was brought into Carver." I actually then pointed out that we were going to lose 12 teachers that year, and he said, "That's right, we were able to save teachers." Page eight, it attributes your question to me, where it says, "Hewens, what are your thoughts on Carver's public safety departments?" I think that was your question, Mark?
It was.
We had both had the same question, but you asked it. The second, Ms. Bogart's second question there, "If hired, how would you know you were doing a good job?" And I remember this very well because I thought it was a great metaphor. He stated that government is boring and it should be kept that way, and it is an indication that things are going well. He also added the metaphor about, "You've heard about the well-oiled machine," and he said, "Well, good government doesn't make a lot of noise." And then at the very bottom, and Bob, you can tell me where you think this goes, but bottom of page eight, I'm assuming, after Mr. Townsend's question was, "What do you have for the board?" And Mr. LaFawn gave his little statement. I think it was then that Mr. Belvin said, "I think I have the new motto." You said it, "It feels like home."
Yeah.
And September 21st, minutes. Okay, page, whoops, these pages aren't numbered. So, it's the third page, a few, a couple paragraphs up from the bottom where it says, "Hewens stated that as an employee, that should be as a former employee, she has seen the morale, and that should be both good and bad morale at town hall. She thinks that currently the morale is good and that there are only a few outliers." And then this next sentence, I'm sorry, I probably didn't say it very well at the meeting, but it got, it's not written correctly. So, what I said was that good morale is based on respect and trust, and respect and trust don't come overnight, they are earned. So, it's not the morale that's earned, it's the respect and the trust. And then the last page, it's not terribly important, but where it says, "Big picture items from the Select Board," and it's a list of seven things. The facilitator asked us to mention big picture items that we had not mentioned at the meeting. My last point is that affordable housing apparently got two votes. I know I was one of them. I don't know who the other...
That was one, too.
We were one, two?
What did you want to change on here?
Sorry?
Was there something you wanted to change on here?
Excuse me?
What was the amendment to this?
To the last page?
Yeah.
So, do you see the line that says, "Big picture items from Select Board"? The next phrase should be, "Not mentioned at the meeting." And then item number one, affordable housing. The facilitator pointed out that there were two votes for that. And that's all.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve with the changes that were mentioned tonight. The minutes are 8:17, 21, 9:10, 21, 9:14, 21, and 9:21, 21.
8:17, executive session. Do we need to...
We already approved those in the executive session.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I do have one additional, and I asked you to question a line. On the September 10th, where I recused myself from the topic, and the vote was four, nothing, and then Bob recused himself from the, I just want to make sure that covered both, that I recused myself from both. Because I think originally Toby, I didn't have to recuse myself from the motion to take it out of order.
Right, you recused yourself from the whole topic.
Okay.
And then after the discussion, Bob recused himself.
Okay.
So, it's all under the same.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, we approved, we voted to approve the minutes. Was it a vote to approve and release? Okay, so we're just approving things.
That's a good point.
These are all open session minutes that we're talking about here.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
I think Jim's...
Second, okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. As the board is aware, we received an open meeting law complaint dated 9/16/21 regarding a failure to approve minutes on a timely basis, and we need to authorize and approve town council to provide a response to that. So...
I'll do this pre-graduating because I think we can do it ourselves, but I'll make a motion to approve town council to respond to the open meeting law complaint dated 9/16/21.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. All right, our next item is to vote to ratify the town administrator appointment of James Barrington as an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Barrington, thank you for joining us. Would you like to step up to the microphone? We appreciate you, your patience today, Mr. Barrington, and we have your application if you'd just like to tell us a little bit about why you'd like to be on the board.
Well, I've been a Carver resident since 1984. I'd always thought about maybe getting involved in what goes on in the town. I'm a retired school teacher of 36 years, and I decided now I have time to actually do something and give back to my community that I've been a part of since '84. I heard there was an opening for the zoning board, and after talking with just a couple people to kind of get an idea of what goes on, I figured this would be a good opportunity for me to join the board and be a part, a working part of this community.
Thank you. Mr. LaFawn, would you just like to tell us why you're requesting that the board do it this way and not in the normal 15-day appointment process?
Sure. The town's bylaw with regard to the appointing authority of the town administrator allows for the town administrator to appoint certain employees, boards, and committee members. Those appointments are subject to 15 days the Select Board has to veto any of those appointments. Unfortunately, because of the timeframe that we're under, and the bylaw does allow for the board, the Select Board, to affirm an appointment rather than have to wait the 15 days. Unfortunately, there's a timeframe issue with the ZBA meeting, a member, I think, as early as 7 o'clock this evening. So, rather than go through and wait for the 15 days, I've asked the board to essentially take advantage of the other piece of the bylaw, which allows for the board to affirm it, because once it's affirmed, it's effective immediately.
Thank you. All right, questions from the board? Mr. Belvin?
First one, the formality. Is the clerk here to swear him in tonight?
That office is open until 7 o'clock.
Okay, just want to make sure that she's still here in the building and available. Mr. Barrington, I'm going to start with the easy ones. How many town meetings have you been to within the past, we'll say, five years?
The past five years, two.
Okay. Have you read our bylaws that we have in place? I know it's great reading, and you can't know everything in it, but have you given a look at our bylaws?
The zoning bylaws?
Yes.
Yeah, I have that packet, and I have looked through it. I haven't done deep reading yet, but I have gone over some of the key areas.
Do you have, because of the case that's going on, and from what I heard was that there's a member that can't be at this meeting tonight, that we need somebody into this position so they have a full complement of five, correct? Mr. LaFawn?
That's what I'm told by the chair, correct.
Okay. You understand that the zoning board can run it with four members, but all four members have to agree on it, and the applicant has the rights to have that or not, or wait for a full member of board?
Yes.
That being said, when you put your application in, who told you about the position that was open?
Mark Corrier.
Okay.
We've coached soccer together. We live fairly close to each other, and he dropped me a line and said, "You know, there's opening in the town," and he remembers I had said something to him about wanting to get involved. And so, he mentioned it to me, I filled out the application, and this is where it's brought me.
Do you have any affiliation with the cranberry growers or 80 Lake Peace, or are there any conflicts that you may have?
No.
Regarding this?
No, sir.
Because, like I said, this case is going to be an important case, I think, that we need to make sure that there's no conflict of interest at all regarding this. So, just want to make sure, that's why the question, okay?
Yep, I fully understand, and I'm not involved on any side of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to thank you for stepping forward. I know it's hard to volunteer and for these type of things, so thank you for stepping forward, especially for those that are opening.
You're welcome.
And I would share those sentiments as well. We always appreciate volunteers, so thank you very much, Mr. Barrington. Anything else from the board?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Barrington to the ZBA.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. And thanks for being able to show up tonight. Appreciate it.
We appreciate it, and we know our schedule's been a little difficult, so we appreciate you.
Just make sure you get to the clerk's office, get sworn in and sign the book.
Okay.
So, you're legal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. At this time, I would entertain a motion to reconvene an executive session in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A1, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of and complaints against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and to return to open session.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Bogart?
Ms. Bogart, aye.
Robert Belvin says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned into executive session. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order, the September 28th, 2021, meeting of the Carver Select Board. Our final item on our agenda tonight is discussion and possible vote on the appointment of a town administrator. So, as you all know, we interviewed both of the gentlemen that the Town Administrator Screening Committee recommended. We've had the opportunity to think about, you know, their interviews and our discussion questions with them. Is there a motion from the board? Is there discussion from the board? Does the board prepare to make a vote? Is the board prepared tonight to make a vote on the appointment of a town administrator?
Everybody's looking at me, I always go first. Okay, right, watch the meeting. No, I'm not prepared to vote to offer anyone a contract as the permanent town administrator. I go back to what I said last time, and I think maybe we rushed the process by giving the screening committee so little time, so I would like to see the search continued, not necessarily restarted, but continued.
So, would you like to put that in a motion?
Well, can other people talk first?
Sure, but usually we make a motion...
Sure, okay, so I make a motion that we not offer a contract to either Mr. Kelly or Mr. LaFawn as permanent town administrator today, and continue the search.
And obviously, if we were to continue the search, we'd have to ask, first thing we'd have to do is ask the screening committee if they're willing to continue the search. Okay, all right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
So, this has been very difficult for me. The process, I think, was hampered by our existing town administrator being in the position that he is, and we didn't get applicants that were up to the committee's standards of what they were looking for. I think the shadow of that put some applicants, chose not to be in the running. I think the committee did a good job. I just think that we got to do a better job. I think we have to have a clear, I think we have to be clear that when applicants apply for a position like this in a town, that they're going to get a fair shake. And it can't be this oversight to say, "Okay, yep, you got the town administrator, the interim town administrator that we have here, yep, he was here for many, many years before, and they brought him back in here, and he's kind of a shoo-in for the position." And I think that may have put people out. That's my opinion. I'm not ready to make a decision at this point with Mr. LaFawn or Mr. Kelly, but where we go from here, I don't know. I mean, Mr. Walsh said that the committee did their job, this is what we have. So, and if you don't like it, get another committee. That was the bottom line. I understand that. We were on a tough schedule there to get one in, and I think that harmed us in the long run. I don't think it was good for the town. I don't think it was good for us, and it wasn't good for the committee, too. So, I think, I have to say, I'm sorry. I don't think we did what we should have done, is kind of take our time and really do something better for this town. So, that being said, I'm really, I'm not. I mean, if I had to, I'd have to go with Mr. Kelly, to be totally honest. If I had those two options, I'd have to go with Mr. Kelly, but...
But right now, we're just addressing Ms. Bogart's or your motion. All right, any thoughts from any other members of the board?
Yes, I would like to say that I sincerely believe that no matter how many times we look, we're probably not going to get a better town administrator than our current interim town administrator. And he wants to be here. I think he really cares about this town, and I think it would be a really, really foolish thing to do to continue the search for some, you know, god-like creature out there that just isn't going to exist. We all have faults. He's not perfect, but I think he's the best one we're going to get. So, I'm not in favor of keeping on looking.
Anything else?
I agree with Bob that I think that with the interim town administrator being one of the candidates, that hurt the quality of applicants we got. So, I guess the tough part to kind of, on Jen's comment, if we continue the search, I don't, if the current interim town administrator is still part of the potential candidates, I don't think we'll get anything additional, because if someone didn't apply before, they're not going to apply again. So, I don't know if we, do we decide on these two, together, separately, research the whole, you know, start the search process all over again? I just think for us to continue the search, I don't think we would get any, might be one or two more, but nothing, still, you're still going to have the interim town administrator who's been here for a long time, that shadow over those candidates that might apply.
And I guess, speaking for myself, I think we have a lot of important things going on in this town. I think we have a lot of important issues facing this town, and I think, I think that it would be detrimental for us to restart this process and go out and probably have to bring in an interim town administrator, because I don't think, I think it's clear that there's several members of the screening committee who may not choose to continue. So, we'd probably have to go and advertise for a new screening committee, start that whole process over again. By the time we did that, advertised, reach out, perhaps we might be able to get a consultant to help us, but perhaps not, it would be quite some time. So, I think, it's my opinion that the screening committee did a good job, the best they could. They can't control who applies and who doesn't apply for the job, and I think they brought us two excellent applicants, and I think we should choose one. So, that's my opinion. So, with that, we have a motion and a second to continue the search. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? So, two to three, that motion fails. So, are there any other motions?
I'll make a motion, sorry. Apologize. I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Kelly to be our next town administrator.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint James Kelly as Carver's town administrator. Discussion?
He came in, sorry, he came in with a lot of experience from many different aspects of the job, and I feel that a change is needed, and I think he would be a welcome change. The people that I talked to for his references gave him great references, and even the people that he didn't put on his references that I reached out to, they also gave him good marks. So, I think he would be a good change here in that town.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have something. So, you know, sometimes change is good, but sometimes change is the worst thing in the world, and it's better to stay with, to stay the course. As Mark pointed out, we have so many important things going on. If we hire someone who has no clue, knows nothing about the town, has to get up to speed on almost every issue, I think that's going to hurt us, and I think in Rick, we have a very strong town administrator who is able to solve a lot of these issues and keep a lot of bad things away from the town. I just think it would be a mistake, and it's no offense against Mr. Kelly. I don't, I don't know him at all. But just change for change's sake is the wrong thing to do right now. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Hoffman?
I agree with both Sarah and Bob that change is good, and it's not necessarily just make change for the sake of change. I just feel that the lack of communication that we're getting from the interim town administrator is not good, especially we have a lot of important things coming up that we need to be informed of proactively, not reactively. And I think that that's very important, so...
All right, and I guess, I'm sorry, Mr. Belvin?
Just to go along, I think communication is, as we just had our other meeting, was a huge topic, and as the board of selectmen here, we're not in here every single day and know about everything going on. That's why we expect the town administrator to fill us in on what's going on. One thing has come to my attention, actually two, with Cranberry Village, and that's concerning to me is that, these are public records, that Cranberry Village didn't pay their bill for three months for their water bill. That's concerning to me, all right, that we, as the water commissioners here of the town of Carver, that we weren't told of this, that they didn't pay the bill. That concerns me, and that goes to communication, and we need communication. And there are other things, but it's just the fact that if we were given the choice by the screening committee of three people and one dropped out and we're stuck with two, I have to say, "I'm sorry, that's what I have to do." I want somebody who can communicate with us and let us know what's going on. So, that's my rationale.
And I guess, just speaking for myself, you know, this has been a very difficult decision, and I've spent an awful lot of time thinking about it this week. I've gone back and watched Mr. Kelly's interview several times. I thought he had an excellent interview. I think he's very well qualified. We've all had over a year to interact with Mr. LaFawn, and we know his strengths and weaknesses. I think some of those we discussed last week at our goals and objectives meeting. But the bottom line for me is, we have so many things going on in this town right now, so many important things, that I think it's a bad time to change. So, I guess that's how I feel about it. I think both candidates are well qualified, but I think it's a very difficult time. I think both candidates are well qualified, but I think it's a very difficult time to change where we're at right now in Town Hall. So with that, does anyone have any, anything to add to this motion? So, hearing none. We have a motion and a second to appoint James Kelly as the Town Administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
I'm abstaining because I am not comfortable voting yes or no yet.
Okay, alright. Are there any other motions?
It's not a motion, but discussion.
Yeah, sure.
Because all eyes are going to be on me now. An interim Town Administrator is just that interim. Has anybody even asked Mr. LaFawn to stay on six months more, if not hired as the permanent one, as one option? Second option is we do have an assistant Town Administrator, so that kind of, I don't, I don't feel the urgency to fill the position ASAP, feeling the way I do now, with the timeframe, it's not even October, I understand the concerns, but there are other options. Maybe he would be interested, maybe not, but I don't think the question's been posed and we do have other people that could serve in the interim if a search continued. So that's why I did what I did.
I think there are a couple of important things to consider. First of all, again, if we have to go back and redo this process, it's, we don't even know if the current screening committee would want to stay on. We may have to go and go out there and look for another screening committee. So there's a lot of time involved, whether Mr. LaFawn would want to stay on for another three months or six months of whatever time period that is. You know, we could discuss that as a board and I have no idea, I certainly haven't discussed that with Mr. LaFawn, I don't know what his feelings would be. But I think, it's just my opinion, that we need to, we need to hire a permanent Town Administrator. I do feel some urgency. I think with all the important things, North Carver, Plymouth Street Water, and many other things that we have going on in town, I think it's very difficult to bring someone in for three months or four months while we go through this process over again and ask them to somehow get into this, appoint themselves, bring themselves up to speed, and at the same time, put together a budget for spring town meeting, all of which we have coming. So I, I know it's only October, but I think there is some urgency to the process and I guess if there's no other motions this evening, I would ask the board to go back and just consider where we're at. Mr. Belvin?
No matter what, we have to look at, we do have some very qualified people here in Town Hall that know the issues and know what's going on. We have elected and appointed members in our community here that work for this town, okay? Somebody that's been in a position that can come right in and start learning the process, it's going to be, alright? Whoever it is, they still have to learn our town, whoever it's going to be, okay? And my feeling here is that you can always use that thing that, oh, it's comfortable, it's comfortable, it's comfortable. Well, sometimes you shouldn't be comfortable, okay? Sometimes you should be turning around and thinking, alright, what am I doing, how am I doing it? Okay? Being uncomfortable is going to make you more in tune of what's going to go on and looking for things within the town, alright, and researching it. So I think, I mean, we don't have a decision now, we're going to have to make a decision, okay? But I want to be uncomfortable, alright? I want to be, with my eyes open, I want to be uncomfortable. I want to know what's going to go on and I'm going to be more in tuned, so that's my feeling.
And I appreciate everyone's feelings, perhaps, Mr. Belvin, if you could just expand on that a little bit, I'm, I'm sorry, when you say uncomfortable, do you mean uncomfortable with an interim, possible interim Town Administrator or just I'm a little uncertain?
Uncomfortable in the sense of saying that when you're comfortable in a position, things happen, okay? When you're uncomfortable, then you know you're going to look at things and you're going to turn around and be reflective and say, okay, well, what's the intent of this and what's the intent of that? Bringing somebody new in, they're going to turn around and bring in something new that we may not have had before, is my opinion, okay? Now, how long this person's going to stay here with our town, doesn't matter, it's that we need to turn around and make sure this town is moving forward. And you saying there's a lot of issues in the town, there's always going to be a lot of issues in the town, the bottom line here.
What's the bottom?
And you know what, someone's going to have to learn the ropes, okay? And you know what, sometimes you have someone who's super experienced, alright, that can come in there and do that. Some people are less experienced and they can still come in here and do their job, okay? But I think we have to make a decision. If the screening committee only gave us a decision that we can pick, these three and one drops out, now you give us those two, that's what we have. And if you're not comfortable in doing one of those, of making a motion for one or the other, okay, then the only other option we have is to go forward with a new screening committee and start the process over again.
I, I agree that we need to, we need to make a decision, one way or another, whether it's on one of the two people that applied for this job or to Ms. Bogart's point and go back and start the process over again, but we need to make a decision. Are there any other motions this evening?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint Rick LaFawn as the permanent Town Administrator.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that for discussion. Any discussion?
I disagree. That's all I want to say, I disagree.
Anything else? Alright, we have a motion and a second. Point, Mr. LaFawn is the interim Town Administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain for previous reasons. Well, here, let me make a mo, can I make a motion? Can I make a motion that we continue this discussion at our next meeting, which I believe is October 5th and we can, I would ask that we all rethink our positions. I know all of your eyes are on me because I did abstain both, so I will go back and think, but I would appreciate if you all went back and rethought your decisions and especially where I'm coming from and opening up the search too. I've told you guys before when I started, one of the first things I was told when I took a webinar was hiring a Town Administrator is the most important thing a select board can do. So this decision has not come lightly, so since we're meeting next week, I would ask us all to take a little more time.
Ms. Bogart, that was my, the next thing I was going to say is that this will absolutely be an item on our next agenda and let's go home and let's rethink where we are and we'll talk about it again.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, be adjourned for the night, let the other meeting come in. I'll second that.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Opposed?